This conference will now be recorded.
We are also way more scattered than we have been in at least a year. So I do typically try to run the meeting in person, but I had a, I have a cold right now and I didn't want to spread my germs. So I thought I would stay home and do it from here. But I got some exciting news today by email that we have two new members. I see at least Frances McDonald, one of our new members is joining us right now.
And Laurie Smith is here in person.
Oh, wonderful. So we have both. That's amazing. You were able to join us with just a few hours notice. So thank you both. Paul, when would be the best time to have them introduce themselves? Does that make sense now?
Have everybody introduce themselves.
Yeah. Okay. Sure. I guess I could start. We can each say some things about ourselves. So I'm Jessica. I'm currently the chair and try to keep our meetings running. And try to help staff set our meetings and liaison with the city council. And in my work life, I do water resource engineering where I work on flood mitigation, stormwater treatment, river and floodplain restoration, dam removal and other aquatic organism passage projects. So. And I have a civil engineering degree and I live in Valley Ridge Road, which is kind of close to the airport. Who wants to go next? Paul, I see you next on my screen. Paul Ingles.
Paul Ingles. Sure. Paul Ingles been in the commission for, I don't know, a couple of years anyway, probably not three, probably two, I don't know. I came in in the middle of rewriting the land development regulations. And we completed that task and we're now involved in writing the comprehensive plan, which I think is going to be a really good thing for us to do. What else to know? I live in the, I live in the Eastwoods neighborhood by Rice High School. And recently ran for city council and was trounced. And so here I am, just a mere civilian. So, and I appreciate your help Fran and Laurie too. So it's good to have you here. It's good to have everybody here. We've had a hard time getting a quorum together the last month or so and it's nice to see everybody here. Who isn't here Jessica? Just Duncan, right?
Duncan McDonald is not able to join us this evening, but he is our vice chair and he continues to be a commissioner. He is a small business owner here in town and has some high school age children and sends his regrets for this evening. I think Paul, you said that he was probably going to join us at our next meeting, you thought?
Yeah, so he's been, his, his wife has had some pretty substantial health issues, but I just spoke with him today and she's stable. It's going to be a long recovery, but she's stable. And so he said that starting at the next meeting, he'd like to re-engage himself. So that's really exciting. And he's probably mostly going to participate remotely because she's in Boston. So. But yeah, very, we're really excited to hear that she's stabilized.
So. My name, Michael Metag. And I live just on the north side of Swift Street between Dorset and Astoria. I've been on the planning commission, I think since 2017. And I love what we do here. Even though it's, it's onerous and frustrating from time to time. I, I'm retired, at least from anything that makes money. Worked quite hard on other things. And I used to run a small tech company that was a subsidiary of a UK publicly traded company. Based originally in Montreal and then later on just outside Dallas. Until 1998. At which time my five or six year stint as a CEO of a public company reached its end, which is kind of par for the course. And I got involved in a startup in New Hampshire. Company that I actually knew and had great talent, but didn't have a good product or a product that was dying. So I was looking for new technology for them. And moved up here in 2001 to be between Montreal, where the factory and my children are, and New Hampshire, where the other part of this company was. And I've been here ever since and I, I'm a, I'm a great promoter of South Burlington because it's such a beautiful place to live. In part because of the work of the planning commission. Who's next? Donna?
I'm next. Okay. Well, I'm joining you by cell phone tonight from St. Augustine, Florida. Where I just spent last two days with my older sister who is very ill. But we enjoyed a seafood feast tonight in her, in her room. So that was, that was kind of fun. I'm a pretty, I'm a new member of the planning commission. I've been on the bicycle and pedestrian committee for about 15 years. I still, I still serve on the bike and ped committee for the rest of the year. I've been an architect for like a long time. Now emeritus AIA and, but I've been still working. I have a lighting design practice, which seems to still keep people, clients keep calling me. So they're making it hard for me to retire. But this is kind of a nice, nice week, nice week away. I'm visiting, visiting family this week. So I live in the Village at Dorset Park neighborhood, right behind Veterans Park. And very, very active in the biking community as well as really enjoy, enjoy Wheeler Park very, very much. That's probably enough.
You can go next. I'm Laurie Smith and I live in Queen City Park. And I've lived there for about 11 years. Moved to the Burlington area in the late seventies and worked in the construction industry for the last 20 years. I own the design, build, construction company, which I sold about a decade ago. And was on the development review board in Shelburne for a number of years and think that the work that's done in the planning commission is pretty important and hope I have something to contribute.
Great. Well, welcome. That sounds like great background experience to jump right in.
I guess I'm next. I'm, I guess the last one. I don't know, but. So I'm, I'm glad to be serving on the, on the planning commission. I've been in, I moved to South Burlington in 2016. And I live in South Point neighborhood in Southeast quadrant. And after I was here a few years, I was asked to be on their, their board of directors for the association. And for two of those years, I was the, the chair of, of the association. And during that time was interim zoning and was a development proposed on an abutting piece of property. And, and at that point was when I got involved with the interim zoning and the rewriting of the land development regulations. And really just start to learn about the city government and, and what was going on in the city. So. Prior to that, I was, I worked for myself as a manufacturer's representative. And traveled a lot through Northern New England, Maine, New Hampshire and Vermont. And this all processing equipment, sifting and screening equipment to industry.
Actually, South Point is an interesting place because part of your property is you used TDRs internally to conserve the eastern part of, of the properties. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly how that was done, but it is. On the tax bills, we're all condominiums. We don't own any land. It's all, land is all managed by the association. And all that land on the eastern side of Parkside Drive. I'm not sure if it's all conserved. I think half of it's conserved, but it's, it's all, a lot of it's flooded and abuts Hubbard Park and we, we have a number of hiking trails in there. We're doing some new signage so people don't get lost walking in the woods there, but it is, part of it is conserved and I don't know how much exactly.
Well, I believe that whole eastern section, which abuts Hubbard Park and the Great Swamp is NRP. So it's, and it's, it's subject of a conservation easement because the TDRs were used to get density in the rest of the place.
Great. Well, welcome Frances. It seems like everybody has a diverse background and lives in different parts of the city and I'm extremely pleased we're, we're back at a full slate here. We've had a whole variety of reasons we've missed the last couple of meetings. As you may see, as we go through our packets, we have missed a few. So this one's kind of a redo of things from the last two meetings that we missed. So I guess, are there any other announcements or anything from staff before we launch in?
I had a question, but wait.
I don't think we have any announcements on the staff side. Some things that have already, already been covered. Two new members, but we've missed a few meetings and it's good to be getting back into it. I guess the only other announcement that I would have about the, is related to the comprehensive plan, but we are continuing to work with our departments about getting some more measurable objectives from them and putting those into our drafts. Sorry. Development review staff need the key.
Sure. So next on the agenda is open to public for items not related to the agenda. And if you're online, you can unmute and turn your video on. And then Kelsey, if, if there's anyone in the room there, I don't know if you have public members in the room. I can't see.
We do have one, one member of the public. I don't know if you have anything not related to the agenda. He's all set.
Okay. Well, I'm not seeing anything else. So I think then we can move on. It sounds like we, I skipped the part where we approve the agenda. Are we all set with the agenda as is? Michael?
Yeah, I had a question of whether we could do item seven or at least seven A right away so that we can be sure that we get through it and have a, and can warn the meeting for March, a public hearing for March 28th.
I think we could. I think the meeting was set up here to make sure we were making progress in the comp plan, which we said was our number one big priority right now, but I could, we could do that if you.
Um, let's, we can wait and see how far we get. If we're getting to, you know, close to nine o'clock, maybe we could switch gears at that point.
Does that seem, does that seem reasonable? You know, there may be people who were not tuned in now, but wanted to tune in for that. So that feels more comfortable, I think, if, if others agree.
Just a quick point of clarification, because this meeting was delayed. We wouldn't be able to warn a meeting for March 28th. It would have to be the meeting after, this first meeting in April. That's a date that I failed to update when we moved the meeting from last week to this week with the weather delay.
Okay. Then I think we can move into item five, which is the first item on the city plan or otherwise sometimes called the comprehensive plan. And Paul had kind of left a message with me today saying that because we had two new members, we might want to do a little bit of a mini intro and to the, what, what we're doing here.
Sure. You ready for that?
I'm, I'm ready for that.
Okay. So what we're in the process of doing is updating our municipal plan. So in the Vermont state statutes, it's called the municipal plan. Our preview, our 2016 version is called the comprehensive plan for primarily branding and outreach purposes. This time around, we've called it temporarily the city plan. That's not a name that is set in stone. It's just what we've been using for some of our outreach. We have completed 11 public conversations, meetings that were mostly Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays, a couple of Mondays. Now I'm thinking about it. In the last two months, two, two to two and a half months, talking about various topics that are related to the city plan and also related to different geographic areas of the city. So there were four geographic areas and seven topic areas. Those all went really well. They were very varying in attendance, but, but generally well attended. We would estimate about 200, 200 plus people attended those meetings. Not unique individuals, but adding up all the attendance at the meeting is somewhere in the 200-ish range. So that was, we've got a lot of good insights from, from some of those meetings and we've been working through some of that and putting it into draft sections that are now moving forward. We also have an online poll that is still live and we'll keep it live at least for, for a bit longer. The current responses is approaching about 200 to that poll. And the responses vary from just answering the questions and not filling in any of the open ended to some pretty substantial open ended responses. So we're working through some of that. We've also been engaging with the city departments, professional staff in police, fire, library, city management, city clerk, the school district. So, you know, anybody else who can pick up who works for the city or with, or with the city. We've also engaged with the South Burlington Business Association. We're planning to meet with the seniors during their Wednesday lunch on April 5th. Am I missing anybody that we've talked to specifically?
All the departments.
Yeah, all the, all the staff, all the staff departments. So we've been doing a lot of outreach. We've been doing a lot of discussing of this plan. Generally speaking, the intention is that the 2024 plan is an update to the 2016 plan. It's not starting from a blank slate. That said, a lot of the policy statements in the 16 plan are being amplified in the 2024 plan. So there were a lot of good policy statements that were made, but we're just adding a bit more, a bit more teeth to them. And that's partially with changing priorities in the city and partially with the completion of the, sorry.
That's good.
Okay. Completion of the climate action task force and the climate action plan from last summer. And all of those things will be included in the plan.
I was going to ask Paul whether a copy of these could be made available for Laurie.
Absolutely a digital one. And if I can scrounge up a couple of paper ones, I'm happy to do that too.
I've got the digital one.
There we go.
Just from, from online.
Yep.
If there was a paper one, it would be great because it's easier to.
And printing.
Sticky notes and.
See what I can do. We tried to bring as little paper to the new building as we can, as we could, but also if somebody wants one printed, we're happy to just print one off. You know, it's, it's.
I can probably get by with.
He's got an important enough job that we're willing to print a copy of the plan for you. Same to you Fran.
So one of the things that is a reorganization and update is the vision and goal statement. So the vision and goals were, there were four statements made in the 2016 plan. Those have been in draft updated by the planning commission and city council in last October, September, October, last fall. So they're related to the previous vision and goal statements. They are reorganized slightly and adapted to some new, some updated priorities.
Can, can I pause there and just sort of underscore the, what, the importance of this part of it?
Yeah.
So something that we talked about with the commission generally is there's really, you know, to the layperson, there's really going to be two or three pages of this entire plan. There's the map. That's the future land use map. And then there's the sort of one page, what's the vision and goals? Some people will go deeper. There's granting entities will go, you know, further in, but in terms of, you know, how do we send the message to the city? This is sort of the key piece. And so, and, and the council is beginning to use this as well. So since our new city manager, Jesse, joined us. The council, she's been working with them, that they put together an annual work plan. They do a whole Saturday session to sort of brainstorm their ideas. And they do that using the current four major themes of topics of what are we trying to accomplish? This past year, this filtered down to all the same, all the committees being asked to do the same thing to develop their work plans and to use as the foundation, the four existing vision and goals. As we did the comprehensive plan outreach this year and these community conversations, all of them were organized around the first question that our facilitator asked was for this topic, transportation, housing, natural resources, whatever it is. You know, which, which one of these is most relevant is the way they sort of did it as an organizing principle to have people thinking about human focused, opportunity oriented, climate resilient and
inclusive.
Inclusive, fair, just as sort of, here's what we're holding firmly and, you know, several commissioners I know were at various ones. I would say that my observation was that while some folks may have some specific feedback on some, some wording improvement, that broadly speaking, this resonated really well with the community of these are four things to hold and to try to treat co-equal as we, as we move forward. So I just wanted to take a second to, you know, underscore that this is the sort of, the, the idea is that this is the foundation of the whole plan. And that everything sort of, well, we're, we're going to ask ourselves, both you as commissioners, us as staff, department heads committees, and ultimately the city council to challenge ourselves of, are we, as we get into specifics, are we holding those, these four values? So.
Yeah.
Thank you.
To, to that end, these are not, they're not sections of the plan. They're not sort of a chapter unto themselves. They are threads that should be running through, through every section. The intention is that we're, every section that we deal with topic wise or geographic area or whatever else it may be in the plan is being driven by these four things. So you should be able to turn to any section and recognize, oh, this is where they're, they're tackling inclusiveness and equity. And this is where they're, they're, they're discussing climate resilience in these different categories.
Can I ask a quick question about that, Paul?
Yeah.
I'm just looking at, for instance, the climate resilient section. And you've got the bullet points. And my understanding of a comprehensive plan is that for it to have teeth, it needs to have specific words like shall. And are they kept out of this on purpose because this is a vision as opposed to shall, meet or exceed the goals?
So that's a great question. Thank you. So this page is trying to be visionary. Who are we aspiring to be? So it, it tries to use words that are powerful, but not giving measurable, measurable pieces. The next layer down that Kelsey's going to speak about in a minute is within each section, we are challenging ourselves and challenging you and challenging the department heads to, as we do the analysis of what our needs are in our community, to set measurable, trackable objectives of what do we want to accomplish in the next decade? So that's, that's where I think it gets to be more specific. The shalls versus the shoulds, I think is, you know, either way, the comprehensive plan is largely a guiding document. It in and of itself doesn't implement policy. It gives the, it gives the framework for all of the other decisions that have to be made, whether it's a land development regulation or it's a, a budget choice or it's a, you know, community value about how we do a recreation programming or it's a, largely, not entirely, but largely it's, it's the, it's, it's sending the message of how do we then develop all the individual policies that have their own votes later that become the regulatory pieces? Does that make sense?
It does. And I just brought it up because I know Burlington's comprehensive plan does not use shall. And as a result in litigation, it is toothless. So when they say you must follow the comprehensive plan, if the comprehensive plan doesn't use certain words.
Right. For the most part, we strive to have the specifics be in our land development regulations. The comprehensive plan does have a regulatory role in Act 250. But I think broadly speaking, you know, from my view in South Burlington, our objective is to try to have our own local regulations speak to the shalls and the musts and the do's. So that, that we have made very clear intentional decisions about the things that we want to regulate. And we try to leave the plan be a little bit more visionary, even though it does have a regulatory view in Act 250. Hopefully, a project that reaches Act 250 has been through a vigorous, it undoubtedly will have been through a vigorous local review. And if we've done our job properly, Act 250 shouldn't be a problem issue.
Yeah. And the flip side of that is when you, when we make change, when the planning commission makes changes to the land development regulations or develops the changes. Those changes have to be rooted somewhere in the comprehensive plan. You can't kind of go over here and start changing the LDRs in a way that the comprehensive plan does not support. But as Paul said, when you put some of that shall, must, you know, language in the LDRs, it's coming from a place that's in the slightly more squishy comprehensive.
I think the preamble to the land development regulations states quite clearly that those land development regulations implement this plan.
Right.
And I think Laurie, there may be some places where it is appropriate because it's, it's a policy that's described in the, if that's the case, then I think the words shall or must or might be appropriate. I, I've found a few places in the past where I thought it might be appropriate.
Yeah. So that's actually something that we are working on in the update from 16 to 24 is, so just to back up for a second. There is the narrative, you know, all this, all these paragraphs and paragraphs of description of policy in the plan. Then there are objectives, which are, as Paul said, are measurable goals. So it may say something like, this is completely thrown out of the air, like the, the narrative may say, improve park access for our, all of our residents or our most vulnerable residents or something like that. In the narrative, in the policy statements, an objective may be expand park acreage by 5%, something, something measurable like that. And then further down is our strategies. So if you're objective in the, just in this hypothetical, if your objective is expand parking acreage by 5%, a strategy may be explore public private partnership for a park space along Shelburne Road. Something that is an action item that would then feed into the objectives that are supported, that are supporting the narrative policy. And then sort of backing up from that is that's where the vision and goals are with the bigger umbrella vision and principles, level of statements.
That makes sense.
Okay.
And as I get up to speed on all of this, if it would be helpful to have questions like this offline sometime to not take up meeting times, I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, you can, you can do that, but I also think it's a great reminder and just keeping everybody on the same page, I think is unless, unless others feel like too much redundancy is happening. I think it's a, it's actually a great use of time to make sure that everybody is understanding things. Cause you may ask a question that others have, but aren't asking and then. And then people are on different levels of understanding.
Yeah, we had, I mean, almost two months ago at this point, and with a different group, had planned to have a discussion kind of getting into exactly what you just asked, Laurie, like, you know, how is this structured? Where are the shells? You know, is this structured in a way that makes sense? You know, so I think it's a perfect discussion for tonight. Like, you know, we've got the description and then the objectives kind of also.
I have an example of what Lori might be referring to. We we said South Burlington has an opportunity to reduce its climate pollution. And I made a note for myself that South Burlington will reduce its climate pollution because that's in the plan. So has an opportunity is kind of too wishy washy for me. So it's more positive. These statements in in our in our vision and goals are all very positive. And I think we should try to reflect that in the language of the plan.
Yeah, the fine line that we have to walk with the plan is the use, the use of mandatory language in ways that is effective and helpful and would support city action. But we also know that there are things that we just can't plan for, like nobody planned for COVID, nobody planned for some of these things. So we have to both require some things and use well and shall and and put in some measurable objectives, but also recognize something could, we can have things that change dramatically in the next 10 years. And the the plan needs to be a little bit nimble in certain places to be able to reflect that. The climate action stuff is a little bit different because we do have the climate action plan. And the intention of is that the climate action plan goals that are in that plan will just be used in
As objectives in the
As the objectives in the city plan. So that's a little bit of a unique case where we kind of did the sort of energy and climate mitigation objectives last summer. And that's really the only case of that. Otherwise, everything else we're doing right now.
Well, I totally understand the the concern of getting hands tied. If for some reason, something that says shall can't happen. And there's no wood over them.
Yeah. So that's we end up using it's a balance between between saying things like strive to, but then someone else is like, eh, well, you don't need, you can strive this much. Instead of striving this much.
We strove.
We we strove.
That's one of those things that I'm not great greatly in favor of. Striving is all very well, but you don't have to strive. We we can do things without tying our hands.
Yes.
And not say, let's strive to do it. That's one of my notes I made for myself. And reducing, I know we you're trying to get this down to 100 pages, so I wherever I could eliminate some words, I have.
And Donna, did you have your hand up?
Nope.
Okay, very good. Or any anyone else? I want to make sure we're getting everybody's comments in.
Is everybody on fairly comfortable with the vision, the role of the vision and goals, the role of the narrative sort of policy paragraphs versus something that would go into an objective or a strategy?
Do we know who our attendees are?
So would it be helpful to, I know, Kelsey, you said you didn't want like line by line input necessarily, but like, how do you see us having like a good discussion tonight to accomplish what you're looking for?
Right. So I wrote these two sections that you're reviewing tonight, the community services section and the, well, first of all, caveat. These are sections in draft. It's very possible that sections that are currently in other drafts will end up being reorganized into some of these sections. It's when I say section, it's a topic area. It's not necessarily a chapter in the final plan. It's structured that way right now. But if we find out in two months that it makes sense to reorganize, like, completely open to that, that none of this is set in stone. I guess what I I wrote these based on the 2016 plan, feedback that I got from our volunteer, other volunteer committees. And these two in particular, from police, fire and city management and some from Department of Public Works, but they also have another section. So this is really all of your first crack to see if I got policy statements correct. I wrote the paragraphs that are there based on the feedback that I got from other entities. So the level of feedback that we're looking for today is at that policy statement level, like when I said, we want to strat, we, sorry, right. We're our, one of our goals is to do, we we would like as a community to do this. And you're saying, no, 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 I want to do that. This is, that's the time for this. This conversation is kind of going through. When I said, I don't necessarily need to go through, I don't want to go through line by line right now. It's more for, you know, word choice or grammar or punctuation, things that different members of the commission may have different opinions on. These are also rough first drafts of of getting some policy statements out to you all to get some airtime before polishing up the actual writing.
So we could do additions and deletions, but not with
Yeah, additions and deletions that are sort of policy level, like I, you know, I made, you know, I wrote a statement that you completely disagree with. Let me know. I completely left out a topic that you're like, why are we not talking about this or that? The other point of explanation there is it's very possible that it's actually very likely that sections, that there are topics that you may think are missing from this section that just happened to be in another thing that I'm drafting. You know, there are things that our communities, especially community services is such a broad topic. Like I have a different section that is recreation and parks. I have a different section that's economic development. So there are things that are possibly may end up in the end living in this section that are not there currently. But any topics that any policies that you see that are missing, anything that you would want to delete, anything that you would want not to wordsmith, but you, you know, make it stronger, make it weaker, whatever. So maybe it does make sense, Jessica, to go kind of.
I have one question, which is fundamental, and it's in your in your, the beginning of your memo to streamline the discussion, you said, the end of the sentence is to do. And do they convey what the city wants them to convey? And my question is, when you say the city, what do you mean?
So that's a big question about the about the comp plan. Technically speaking, the comprehensive plan is a plan for the community. Functionally speaking, it does drive a lot of city processes. So that is kind of a question that has to be weighed throughout. There are things that the community would like to strive for as a whole. Being more equitable, being more inclusive, being more climate resilient are community goals. There are some statements that have to be a little bit tighter to city government. So
But generally speaking, it's the what what the citizens of South Burlington, it's their vision and hope for the future.
Generally speaking, yes. There are some slightly more specific statements that do have to reflect city, city government processes, municipal processes.
And not only that, Michael, you know, I think that, like, this is a real time for us to try to put on like a broader perspective than just our own personal perspective. And try to think back to, you know, if if we attended the listening sessions, kind of what we were hearing from others or thinking back to maybe our other experiences and other committees or, you know, what we heard from our neighbors and you know, trying as a group to you know, represent the community as a whole and not only our individual kind of perspectives. And I know that that's a hard thing to do, but at least there's more of us now to, you know, be able to provide more perspectives. So Kelsey, do you think it would make sense for you to put up on the screen the objectives of the the first section, the public, the community facilities and services one? And maybe we can kind of all as a group, you know, direct our comments and to not just the objectives, but the whole community services section first before we move on to the energy one.
I will say, the objectives that are included in this draft are very draft, so completely open to any edits, completely open to anything that's missing. There are also, there's also some feedback from our city departments that I have to sort of integrate into this. But and so you'll see in some other sections, I'm not, I don't remember if today is one of the days, but some sometimes there actually aren't any draft objectives because we need to kind of draft them as we go, as we plan on some some policy statements. But this one does have a few drops, drop statements.
Is this a first look at these two sections or is this
This is the first. This is the first for the planning commission. Well, this is for anybody. This is just from from my my brain to all of you, well, I'm Paul's brain.
Because I haven't really digested it all yet.
Oh, I would not, I would not. No, no. So I guess that's something to mention, especially for Lori and Fran and for everybody. They, we are intending for every meeting to have a few sections as a first look. And as we sort of cycle through some of those sections, they're also be cycling back to the the other committees and departments. And then the intention is getting more into May and then June, there will be another they'll be updated with some edits and they'll come back around. So you may not see this section again for a month or two, but it will be coming back around. And then June through the middle-ish of August, middle to end of August, will be planning commission review of the full draft. So that's some of the like moving sections around, you know, oh, we didn't really talk about this, or we wanted to talk about that. So you really do have at least two more opportunities on each section.
We should bear in mind that June to a lot of people are going to be pushing off for vacation.
People are gone.
Maybe, but
So so, I mean, with that said, you know, it's true, we don't need to go through line by line. But if people did notice something that felt really out of line or something missing, you know, I know, Michael, I know, I know, two commissioners just got appointed today, so it's kind of unfair to ask for any kind of detailed review. But, you know, like Kelsey said, if something jumped out and you want to bring it up now, I think that makes sense. You know, Michael had sent around some some wording things. And one of the things I saw in there that really makes sense to really bring up as a group is that under human focused, he had said to promote social contact and mixing through provision of shared services like the library parks, open space, dog parks, and, you know, has a lot of examples there of kind of that social aspect of our community services. And I think it makes sense to have something here or, you know, or at least somewhere else. But I know, Kelsey, you said some of the rec related things or maybe at least temporarily in a different spot.
Yeah. So there's a couple of things. There's there's provision of of community services, like what kind of service do people get when they come in and they need something from the city clerk or from planning and zoning or, you know, that's that's would be in this section. It feels a little artificial to divide that from they come into city all to register for a recreation program. But right now, that is that is aligned and how it's been drafted is wrecking wrecking parks is in a different section. So city events, city rec, park management is is separate from this, but anything about, you know, equity and how people interact with the city. Otherwise, you know, they come in to pay their property taxes or or get a dog license, that is all in this section.
I think the other thing in this section, I'd love to get a few minutes of thoughts from you all on this. And this is really in some ways, this is an old section in that we're, you know, we're talking about basic services. But in some ways, this is sort of our first foray into something that our plan has never done before, which is to think about like, how does our city and the way that we operate need to evolve over the next decade as our population changes? You know, how does, what do we, what do we not do as a city today that we may be thinking about as to what what service provision looks like in a few years' time? You know, I think one example of that we'll talk about, I'm sure, under energy is the city council is really interested in us having a more proactive role in the subject of energy and and climate change. But, you know, we also know that human service needs have really expanded in as we're a growing community. And how do we, how do we think about what we what our city looks like and what its needs are a decade from now? So I'd love to get some initial thoughts on on that one measurable objective that we're thinking of that might apply at least to the types of things that people come to us for is to think about having an objective that city events and activities and participation reflects the demographics of our community. You know, that's a measurable thing to say when we do recreation programming or when we have committee membership or whatever it might be, that we, the people who turn out are a representative more or less of the people who live in our community. So that's that's one thing that we're thinking about is a measurable objective that is tied into this. I'd love to get.
Are you referring to some of the things that are written in the outreach section where we talk about behavioral well, behavioral changes? And in other places, mental, what do you call, mental therapy services? Those kinds of things?
Potentially, yeah. I mean, I'm not, I'm trying not to prejudge the subject, but yes, those are a couple of things.
Childcare.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, does do do? Yeah, these are things that traditionally South Burlington has not been heavily involved with. You know, we haven't done a lot in small business growth, for example, would be another area, a totally different area that we haven't as a city taken a big foray into.
Well, and the new community justice center. Something that's completely new in this plan, in the plan and in the city.
So I guess, yeah, I'd love to open it up to people had feedback about either in these bullet point draft objectives. And recognizing that these are not written as measurable, and that is something that we'd be working on updating. It was just placeholders for some of the topic areas that I thought were relevant to this subject. So we're trying to figure out what, how to measure these sorts of things, or if they can be effectively measured. So anything in the bullet points, but then also in the narrative of the draft itself that jumped out either as you need to change it in some way, need to make it stronger, waiter.
Hey, Paul Engels, can I put you on the spot for a second on this subject? And without going into the specifics of the actions that the charter committee is looking at? Oh, I guess not. We might, we might have lost you.
There he is.
I was gonna ask, in in your work so far, are there any thoughts that might be useful here to talk about the need for, what is the perceived need for some maybe governance updates in our community as we're changing? I'm sort of just trying to get the ball rolling on something.
Yeah, but Ben Paul's trying to get his mute off.
I think it's a white, it's a white button with a little mic on it. For me, it's on the far left. I don't know if that's helpful.
For me, it's on the bottom. About you, that what you mean, Jessica, bottom left?
Yeah, the bottom left. Yeah, it's still muted. It's not the red X button.
I'm going to stop the sharing because I think it makes it a little bit easier for folks to find their buttons when the sharing is off.
Yeah, it might be different on if he's on the mic. Yes, thank you. Great, Paul.
So this is a question from the from the charter committee about governance issues. And we have just produced a pros and cons document that'll be vetted by the public soon. Suggesting changes in our governance model, which may include increasing the number of counselors on the city council, having counselors elected from the the districts, the legislative districts of the city that the legislators are elected from, which could also be called wards and the wards is not as kind of an off putting concept, I think, but but, yeah, we could have five counselors elected from each of the five wards. We could have 10 counselors elected from each of the five wards. From my point of view, it's important to get away from citywide elect elections of counselors. And that's just, that's my extra ground in that. We also have looked at mayors. We've talked to mayors. Um, we also have looked at mayors, we've talked to mayors from around the state. Um, there are weak mayors and there are strong mayors. Um, the mayor of Rutland was a strong mayor until just recently when he wasn't reelected. So, uh, there is that model, Rutland has that model of having a strong mayor that, uh, pretty much runs the city. Uh, others, other cities have weak mayors that are just, uh, basically the chairs of the city council and have no real administrative function. So that with a weak mayor, you still have a city, um, a, uh, city manager uh, who still administers the city, makes decisions about hiring and firing. Um, so we're looking at all those things, at mayors, at, uh, at citywide elections versus, uh, ward elections, um, district elections and the number of, uh, of counselors that there are. So, uh, and that document will be out soon, probably within the next couple of weeks or so, uh, for everybody to take a look at and weigh in on. So it's, uh, it's something to begin thinking about. Um, our charges from the council that the charter committee only meets when the, when the city council, um, calls us into meeting on some particular topic. And so we've been meeting for almost the last year on this topic of, uh, uh, city governance. And, um, ultimately it's up to the council to decide. But there is, there is a problem in that so many of the city counselors of late have come from the southeast quadrant. And, um, and there isn't the kind of equitable distribution of, uh, representation that we'd like to see. And Paul's disappeared.
He has disappeared, but thank you for that. Well, I think that's what he was looking for.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was helpful.
I guess whatever gets approved will have to be built into this.
Yeah.
And if it's not approved by the time, we need to get.
Then, then you end up with a placeholder that says there is a process ongoing about these things. Um, just a point for, for Fran and Lori especially. Um, the goal is to have this adopted by Thanksgiving, um, by city council, which counts backward with formal, formal processes by city council and formal hearing processes with the planning commission. Um, takes about two months to do all of that. So that's why we have the August, uh, the end of August deadline to produce a pretty close to
Finished.
finished, yeah, final draft.
Just a touch of work.
Yeah, just a little bit.
So, so you'll see on our upcoming agendas that we're trying to, um, always make a big chunk of progress on the comp plan, which is why I kind of pushed back a little bit on Michael's suggestion about the LDR change. Cause I think this is, um, a pressing need, um, you know, to make sure we're doing it.
Jessica, I wanted to say just one other thing too.
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
For me, the most amazing thing I've learned in this, um, endeavor with the, with the charter committee is that, uh, we are, Vermont is a Dillon state and I had never even heard that term before. But, uh, what it means is that, uh, the power of government lies with the state and that with the municipalities. So everything we do has to, uh, not only have the approval of the voters, but the approval of the legislature. Um, you know, I think, you know, and Vermont, we all think we're such home rule kinds of people uh, and that we're all powerful in our communities. But, um, in fact, uh, the communities, the municipalities have almost no power. All the power is with, uh, with the legislature and with the governor.
Yeah, the municipalities in Vermont have, only have the powers given to them by the state. Um, instead of, instead of the other way around, a home, a home rule state operates in the opposite, um, opposite direction.
Can we ask Donna, Donna is making me motion sick.
Hey Donna, if you, could you turn off your, would you mind turning off your video?
I think it's on.
No, her video is on, it's just muted. You can just see her spinning around. Donna, you're muted, we can't hear what you're saying. Anyway, um, I would love to hear if, uh, what people have for policy, any, you know, policy statements that were made that are, are incorrect, anything that's missing at this point. Um, understanding Fran and Lori, well, we had a day.
More equipped about the question.
Sure.
In the, in the objectives we have, one of them is to fully fund the community justice center.
Yeah.
And at the bottom of page, well, the second page of community facilities and services.
Yeah.
We have this paragraph about the community justice center.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, you talk about its, um, tenuous position.
Yeah.
So since we say we, an objective is to fully fund it.
Yep.
Um, what we've got here is not really a plan. And if it's going to be a plan, we should make sure it's budgeted in by the city.
Right.
That would be an objective here, I think that we need to carry from there into the text.
So that's, that's a policy question that I have for all of you. Is that, is that something that the city wants to do? It is current, we currently have a community justice center. It is currently funded by grants, um, and primarily from the Department of Corrections. Um, but that leads to just a little bit of, you know, outside control. And, you know, you could have your grant not funded the next cycle and all of that sort of thing. So, um, to solidify the community justice center's position in the community, um, it would require more inter, more or complete internal funding. So that is, that's a policy question.
That, that was my
Yeah.
suggestion, that that be the policy that we lay out here.
Okay.
That should be budgeted internally, um, by the city. Um, and, and perhaps budgeted, but maybe we don't have to spend it until the other source dries up.
Hmm.
But you would say that, yeah.
In, in stating that, my question is, what kind of budget are we talking about?
That's the next question.
Is it, is it a million bucks or is it 10 bucks?
It's not 10 bucks. It's, it's not a million bucks and it's not 10 bucks. It is in between. Um, I don't have the specific numbers on that, but that is something that I can find out.
I think if that's an objective and it's got a number attached to it, we need to get some feedback from the council before we say we want to make it an objective. Well, or feedback from somebody.
I think we'll get that feedback when we send this to them.
Yeah.
Otherwise we'd have to, I think we'd have to go back to them too many times.
Yeah, so that, that is something that we will get in sort of the, the pro, the formalized process. Um, it is an important number to know. Um, and I can definitely find that out from the police department, what's, what the, at least approximate operating budget is for the community justice center, and that can be included in this narrative. Um, they can then, the city council can then decide, you know, the planning commission from a policy perspective, not necessarily from a budget perspective, from the policy perspective thinks it's a good idea to bring in fully in-house. But the city council says that's not feasible because it costs 600, about $600,000 or whatever it is. And I don't think it's a high, but like hypothetical.
Yeah.
You see, it seems like, um, the, are the objectives that you have, um, under the, I guess it's community facilities and services supposed to apply to all the sections below it? Like the public safety, community justice and social services? Like the police, like everything to do with the police? Or is there going to be another group of objectives?
No, that would be the, the, the objectives for that section.
Cause part of what, you know, part of what you talk about in the, um, the text, and I went to the, the community listening session, covered this
Yep.
and heard from the chiefs that they not only don't, they have empty positions, so they're understaffed. But, and you have this written in here, they're responding to more and more calls than involve unmet social services and mental health needs.
Yep.
We need to look for flexible solutions to support public safety in our community. Like, I feel like that's not in the objectives. Like, I know you mentioned the community justice center and then at the end you talk about greater staffing and resources for mutual aid. Like, I feel like we need to mention that we need the greater staffing and resources for us, not just for mutual aid.
Yep.
Wouldn't, wouldn't those, um, functions that the police department is trying to, to fill now all within the community justice center, in the purview of the community justice center? Rather than burden the police with having, I know they have, they do it now because we don't have any choice.
So what we're trying to do in the, in the comprehensive plan is not necessarily say you in the city do this, you in the city do this, you in the city do this, because there's a lot of flexibility in some of those things. It's more identifying community needs and, um, policies and objectives for meeting those needs. Not necessarily, is it this person or this person or this person who's going to be doing those things?
No, I'm sure.
So, cause I've just been, um, my, some of the feedback I've gotten from, um, the city manager and some other management, you know, department heads is that it's not, it's not terribly helpful in the plan to be saying the mental health, um, response needs to live in community justice center. It's more helpful to say like the city has, is setting a priority to, uh, to adjust to this changing nature of first response. It used to, it used to be, you know, crime and
True.
fire and things, and now there's a lot more social services needs. So whether that is solved with, um, increasing our partnership with the Howard Center, plus adding, um, social services, paramedics or something into the fire department, that's a little bit farther and more granular than, than this part of the plan. Um, because it requires some of that flexibility. So adding something that's a policy statement that the city, um, or the community, South Burlington recognizes this need and the need to address it, that's sort of the level of the, of the comprehensive plan. Where those different pieces are, that's the level of the city council and city manager to decide how things are budgeted, where things end up and how things are structured in sort of day to day governance.
Then I feel like that needs to be a goal, like a, an objective. Because, you know, one of the things we heard during that session was that, um, you know, things like dealing with traffic things and, you know, cars running bikes off the road. Like, there's a lot of things that our, our emergency services like aren't able to cover because there's just so many different things that are all on their plate. So it feels like however the resources get divvied up, there just aren't enough now.
I think that's a point I'm trying to make, that burdening the police department with all that, uh, may not be realistic. Because as Jessica pointed out, they, they have other responsibility and maybe other priorities. Uh, you know, law enforcement and safety and so on. Whereas de- dealing with mental health issues, um, might better be, uh, it's, it's a need that we need to fulfill.
Yep.
Clearly, that's the message we're getting. But where, uh, i- is it in the police department or is it in the community justice center? Or do we, you, you don't, I think I'm, I'm, the message I'm getting from you is you don't want to say where.
Yeah.
You just want to say, we need it.
Yes.
But that's not, saying we need it is not a plan.
It, it.
It is a plan if you say, this is something that needs to be done. We've got all these buckets, I don't know which bucket it's gonna go into, but I'm telling the city council that this needs to happen. And the city council then has to work with the police and the
And fire.
standard and whatever and say, okay, guys, we're gonna budget it over here, we're gonna budget it over here.
You mean, maybe city management rather than city council?
City management, city council, like deciding, is it cost effective to partner with an outside entity instead of bringing it in house? Is it more, is it better for it to be at fire or police? Those are, are not things that necessarily should be made in this plan.
Jessica's point of making an objective out of it would satisfy.
Yeah. It sounds like, Jessica, you, you think it is adequately, at least in this draft level, adequately addressed in the narrative section, but just not called out in the objective.
Yes, yeah. Um, anyone else have anything you're seeing either in the text or something missing or something?
I see something that we might not need, which is the paragraph about how many police officers we have.
Hmm.
I mean, it might be nice to know, but I don't think it's essential in the, in this plan. I wouldn't believe it.
Yeah, so that, so I think, um, Michael, you're looking at the, the last paragraph in the police section.
Yep.
So that is actually a remnant from the prior plan. That is about 50% paragraphs like that, um, that are sort of inventory style, um, information. I have cut the vast majority of, of that stuff and left some of this bare bones. Like, here's the approximate scale of what we do, like here's a couple of things. Um, I'm happy to cut it. Um, but I left it in because that's how the prior plan was written and just sort of contracted most of that sort of inventory level stuff out of this plan. Um, but left in just a little bit of more contextual information for those who are not as familiar with our city or, um, something like our police department.
Who's gonna be, who's gonna need that information? I mean, it's, I just think it's
Yeah.
it's not relevant to the plan.
Yeah, the, the other thing, the two, the few pieces of information that I thought were relevant to include were that it is, that they're currently understaffed for what they're funded for. They have funding for 38, they can't, they haven't been able to hire to 38. Um, which sort of puts a little bit of a number to some of the other statements that were made in the other paragraphs. Um, and just, just a couple of other pieces of background information. But again, I'm, I'm happy to cut. As, as, as you've noted, I'm happy to cut.
Would, would there be an objective to, uh, keep the police department fully staffed? And obviously that's something we have a hard time doing, but.
Yeah, possibly.
I didn't know, I mean, pointing out that they're understaffed.
There is a statement in right above it that they values community partners in collaboration and has a goal of returning to a staffing level that would allow more resources to be dedicated to enriching these parts.
Yeah.
So.
It feels like an objective.
Returning to the rights, that start, staffing levels, I think shouldn't be stated in there, but we don't have to say what's.
Okay.
Yeah, good goal. Okay, anything else, um, going down through here? I like the section on the flood resiliency.
Right in your wheelhouse, Jessica?
Yeah, it does, it does mention the words primary conservation areas, which I know has been like a weird term. So I don't know if that's the right term there, maybe that could go away. But, um, you know, I do think that the wetlands aren't mentioned there and that actually they do help with flood resiliency. And then you, you do mention the river stream and flood plains and lakeside, so those are all good to have listed.
Yeah, this is an interesting section where we have a, there's another section that deals with, um, storm water and, um, potable water and some wastewater management. So there's other like utility level water things. This is, this section is framed as, um, part of our emergency response. Um, so I didn't know if you felt like that was an effective division to keep it here to have, have some of that emergency response, response information.
Yeah, I think, I think it makes sense. I think that, you know, the conservation of those, those natural areas are, are for flood resiliency. And they're also for water quality and they are for, you know, other things. So I think it makes sense to like specifically call them out in those different areas. Um, I guess my point here was instead of saying the word primary conservation areas, I think we should probably say wetlands or, um, or even the habitat blocks, you know, have a flood resiliency component. So it just felt like maybe that list wasn't a full list.
Okay.
I had, I had added something, and I don't know what I did with it.
And it sounds like if you have the two different sections, you might have cross references.
Absolutely, like that's, that's sort of a July project for me is making sure that all the appropriate, once everything is sort of settles, making sure like for more information on storm water, see this section. If you're in the storm water for more information on flood resilience, you see this section. For more information on our, our conservation efforts, see the natural resource, you know, all of those cross things. Because that's the thing, all of everything, Michael was pointing out, he highlighted the same phrase, primary conservation.
I highlighted it, a big question mark mixed that up, but then I added such as
Right.
river and corridor buffers and setbacks, wetlands, wetland buffers, habitat locks and connectors, forests, meadows, farmland, NRP lands and map flood plains. And you've got a long lake chaplain. Uh, you know, it's, we're either gonna do some, do it or not, not do it. I mean, those, those are all. I mean, those, those are all in our level, level one or two.
Hazards.
Hazards or conservations, yeah. So leaving it, I thought it was half done. We can change the word, the words, what do you want to use instead of primary conservation areas?
I don't know. I mean, just, I know that we've, some, we in the past had used that in a specific way. I mean, we could make it more generic with natural, natural land uses and then list off those specific protected areas, something like that.
Or environmentally protected areas, since they're, you know.
And I, and like, I don't need to necessarily wordsmith, but it just felt like we've, we've, we've identified other areas that we've protected in addition to the ones that were already listed there.
Yep.
So my point was that there's a list and we either know, know it all or completed.
Yep, I agree.
It would help a lot, I think.
Anything else? Policy level thoughts?
Like, would this be a spot where the senior center would also be included? Oh, there I do actually see it. I must have just missed it.
So the senior center is included here, just below library. There will be more, more about the, so the senior center is listed here almost more as a facility. And then some of the programming that happens in the senior center would be in the, I mean, as, as we sit here, it would be in the draft for recreation and parks. But again, all things can be.
But it is a public library, not a public community library. We call it the public library.
Sure.
It's not a public library, not a public, public community library.
Okay.
Okay, I won't go into that.
Okay.
We, you know, one of the things that seemed like a big topic in a few of the listening sessions that we talked about was about like the snow removal.
Yeah.
And on the part, and especially on bike lanes and sidewalks. And it just feels like it came up in at least two of the listening sessions. I guess I just wonder if we, like where something like that would go or if that's feedback that goes directly to public works for their operations.
So it could, so a couple of things. One, this section was supposed to be reviewed in the end of February. So some of the, some, this was drafted before some of those comments were made, like in the transportation listening session. It can live in both places or either place. It could be in sort of here, public works and maintenance of roads. It can be in that's how we support a healthy transportation system. It's a, it's sort of an artificial exercise to be dividing all of these topics into sections and columns when they, I really want it to be the world's biggest Venn diagram, but that's not.
My suggestion would be that the, at a broad level, maybe that you talk about that in the transportation sector as, you know, you've got, you've got a transportation objective through the Climate Action Plan that says reduce vehicle miles to two and a half percent annually. In order to do that, there's a whole host of things that will need to happen. And one of them is people will need to be able to get around year round on foot. And so, you know, without going into the operations part of it, of saying, you know, we should have a traditional plow route, which is an operations question. The subject area of, in order to meet our transportation goals, we will need to have a bicycle pedestrian transit system that is operational, if not 365 days a year, 362 days a year, you know, excuse the two-foot snowstorm days. But, you know, that, that's, that's a, that's an approach rather than an operations thing. You know, we, we want to have that. And, you know, there may be recreation goals. You know, I know that in Burlington, for example, the Burlington Bike Path, they plow half of it because it's also a recreation goal to have a cross-country ski trail.
Yeah.
I'm not saying that's us, but, you know, that, you know, can, you know, we can talk about does, is, is the rep path network intended, is it a transportation system, is it both? We are about to this year do a bike pad master plan that can get into more detail on that too.
And Donna, I think, Donna, you've got your hand up?
Donna.
I think Donna has her hand up. I see a little hand signal waving at me. It might be an accident.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Yeah, one point that, I think I had listed this in, in written comments because, you know, this, this top, this, this topic is like three meetings in right now. But the, the public safety aspects of controlling vehicle traffic to the speed limits, and I think that does fall within this category as well as transportation, just because it, it, it does fly in the face of many of our other objectives of trying to be a pedestrian-friendly, transit-friendly, bicycle-friendly community that, that a lot of traffic just far exceeds the speed limits. And we've pretty much stopped trying to enforce the speed limits. And I didn't see anything in, in this portion dealing with public services that, that really deals with, with that.
Donna, do you think that would go in the police section or?
I do. Yeah, I do, I do think it belongs in the police section.
Yep. It is not, it's not called out expressly, but I'm, I'm happy to do that if others agree.
Yeah. I think, I agree.
Law enforcement that is able to.
I would speak less about the operation of staff and more about the outcomes that you're looking for.
Yes.
Because it does, it's not about how many police officers we have, it's about the speed of travel.
Yep.
So I just, I, I want to make sure that we've got a separation of operation versus policy. So, you know, if we can say, if you want to say as a policy that like, you know, identify opportunities to reduce speeds, speed limits and compliance to speeds, I think that's, that's the more policy end of it.
Yeah, yeah, because we're not really saying how they go about doing it, just that that is the objective.
And I don't know if, if measures like traffic calming should be included in that or somehow alluded to in that. So it's not just, it's not just enforcement that controls speeds. It's also the way, also the way our, our roads are designed.
I'm, I'm leaning towards that this might be better served in transportation also because then you're not talking about who's doing the enforcement. You're talking about, again, the outcomes.
Yep.
Of, we want a transportation system where people drive at a thoughtful speed.
And these are strategies to attain.
Yeah.
I always.
That'll be okay with you, Donna.
And I attended most of them, not all, but certainly the one that discussed where, where people raised this issue of bike and pet paths not being usable in winter because they don't get plowed fast enough. And I, I'm aware of this because I've lived in, in places where it's a question of prior, priority or concurrent work. In one of the cities I worked, I lived in, they concurrently plow the sidewalks and the roads. Same time, different crews, different equipment and different speeds. You're probably aware of it all because you know it's, it's westbound and the sidewalk plowing guys run at about 20 miles an hour.
Right. When you say different speeds, it's actually the sidewalks do it faster. You know, much of them jump out of the way.
You know, getting this, achieving this objective is an operational issue, but I think it can be done by, by, at some, at some point, somebody talking to public works about doing them concurrently. Because, yeah, generally speaking, they're going to plow the roads first.
But I guess the, the thought is that the, the goal, the community need is clear sidewalks for transportation purposes.
Yeah.
So that's, that's sort of how, how.
It's also just wind. It's not just clear sidewalks.
Sure, sure.
If it's lunchtime by, by the time, yeah.
But the, but the community need that is being met would be for transportation needs, not to employ more DPW people, you know, and it's like, it's sort of.
That's another issue.
Right, but that's a difference. That's what I'm trying to draw the line where the, the sections are divided or should be divided a bit by what is the community need being met? And if it's the sort of transportation system that is healthy and usable for bikes and pedestrians.
I'm not trying to, I wasn't suggesting that we should dictate to, to DPW how to do it. I just gave as an example that I know of a place where it is done.
Yep.
So it is doable.
Yep.
Okay, so is there anything else on the community services section or are we ready to move on to the energy section?
So you're, you're saying sidewalks should follow the transportation section?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which will be done. I don't think it's next meeting. I think it's the meeting after, but, because the next meeting is next week.
Okay, so I guess we'll move on to the energy section and see if anyone has any high-level policy things in here?
Yeah, and the trick, just a slight caveat about the, the energy section. It's a little bit unique, as I mentioned before, that most of the, if most if not all of the objectives are actually coming from the Climate Action Plan that was already, was adopted by city council last fall. So these are things that city council has already taken on and have just been written into this energy section of the plan. Just, just mentioning that because I don't think we need to be re-discussing some of the things that have already been adopted because they won't be changing.
Just something I noted that whenever we talk about a plan, we, you've got to be clear that it's, that you're talking about the Climate Action Plan or CAP or some other plan, i.e. this plan. And it's not always clear. So I've marked up my, my copy here with implementation, implementation of the Climate Action Plan rather than leaving it unsure. And I also wanted, I think somewhere in here, we need to acknowledge the fact that this plan, that Climate Action Plan was done by staff, volunteers and the CCRPC. I think it played a key role and not leave it to selected consultants, but be specific because I think it, it was a key contributor to the success of getting it done. I also have another question. And that is, why are we, why are we using Act 174 when, when we really have our own, our own objectives in the Climate Action Plan? There are nine of them, I guess. Some of them are in, in, in the list there, but I think we should stick with our plan, the objectives.
Right, so the reason that we've referenced Act 174, it is one of the stated objectives of the Climate Action Plan to try to meet the standards of Act 174. What Act 174 does is, it's a state law that sets certain criteria for a municipality to identify areas for renewable energy production, areas that are off limits to renewable energy production and set conservation goals essentially. If a community meets all of those standards, then it can request authorization from the Regional Planning Commission that is acting on behalf of the state to give the city substantial deference at public service board proceeding. So somebody goes to put in a solar array, the city is given a higher level of authority, of not, not authority of input into the state proceeding. But if we don't go through the Act 174 process, we don't get that. So this is.
Is it Act 174 and the Climate Action Plan? Just add both of those?
The, the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission already, it's, it's this 2018 Ecos Plan that's already in compliant with Act 174.
So they are in compliance, they can.
So we need to get them.
To, to, to approve us under Act 174.
Right, that's different than what's written here.
Okay, so we can, we can rephrase it, but that was the intent was to say it is an objective for us to gain substantial deference essentially.
And for the rest, we should then use the.
Which I am not concerned about because I think we've done all the homework on, but there are, you know, there's some checkboxes that as we do our review, they might say, oh, you got to add a sentence here, this kind of thing. I think we've done a lot of positive work, but it's still an objective to get the substantial deference.
And the fact that we have the CCRPC as our major outside consultant means they probably covered all the bases for us. I think we do more than what's, what's required.
Yeah, I think.
There's some procedural things that are specific, math-specific things that are not.
So the reference is far.
Yeah, I will say just one last sentence on that. The hardest part for South Burlington to meet on Act 174 is each town basically has to demonstrate that it is general, it has the capability of generating enough renewable energy to meet its needs, which is a very frustrating standard because the more people in your community, the more energy you have to preserve, you have to. And then we believe that we have a path where the majority of new, the, the majority of the, of the objective can be met through rooftops, which is not what the case is in most towns in Vermont. In most towns, the, when the RPC has helped those towns to do that math, you know, it's little, it's little houses, there's not a lot of ways to meet it. But it is tight. So we think that we can get approval, but we're going to, you know, over the next few months, we're going to talk with the RPC and make sure that this plan, the Climate Action Plan, have met that. And if we haven't, we'll come to you and say, what do you want to do? Do you want to not go for substantial deference? Or do we want to make an additional statement about where renewable energy can be placed?
Yeah.
That'll be your choice.
And the only other little procedural thing is that the, an enhanced energy plan has to be adopted through a municipal plan process like this. So they can't just approve the Climate Action Plan. It has to be this plan.
Donna, do you still have your hand up?
No.
Okay. Anyone else have any energy input?
I have something under building and thermal.
And then we'll go to Paul. Can we do Paul Engels and then Laurie?
Absolutely.
I just had a question about the buildings that have been built in city center. Are all of our buildings net zero?
All of the buildings in city center are meeting the city, the state's stretch energy code and are solar ready at a minimum. I don't believe that they are necessarily net zero, but they are meeting those other standards.
And they're, they're currently fossil fueled?
Well, city hall uses a thermal heat pump. I'm not sure, future buildings, where they get their, their, they submit their state, their fire department permit as of February 15th of 2023 have to be heated and cooled by renewable or carbon-free sources. Ones before that don't.
So city center is a combination of solar and geo exchange, right?
No, city hall.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, we're also connected to the grid, but the bulk of our power is coming from those.
Includes the library, I believe. Yes.
Okay, was that it, Paul?
Yes.
Then on to Laurie?
So under buildings and thermal, the top of the second page, we're talking about weatherization and the cost it's going to be in. The city and its partners will need to, partners will need to support homeowners in making these changes to assure equitable and successful implementation. I've heard repeatedly the concern that the move towards decarbonization and electrification is going to place an undue burden on low income, et cetera. And I think somehow that needs to be more clearly addressed in here. And I don't know how we do it, but I think as we say, this is what we have to do, we have to come up with a way to make it so that it's doable and it's equitable. And not just supporting homeowners, but specifically supporting people without the financial resources to, to make these changes.
Yep.
Because repeatedly, all of these things get attacked because they're going to, they're going to bankrupt all of our low-income people, so.
So it sounds like that's, so that second sentence in that little paragraph, beefing it up to make it, instead of just saying to assure an equitable implementation, putting the express words of low income behind.
And we will, we will design a system so that these changes will not cause economic hardship for people who don't have the resources.
And, and I, I, I think that's a fantastic. And, and I, I, I think that's a fantastic point, Laurie, and I would add to it that some of the feedback, some of the concern we've been hearing is in addition to the cost of the transition, today at least in 2023, the operational costs can be higher on electric for a pre-existing, not necessarily a new home, but in a converted home than gas, because electricity-
Only if it's resistant heating. Only if it's, if it's hot drumming.
Not necessarily, so for example, in Burlington Electric, when they give their, you know, here's the rebates for conversion, they put in bold letters, it may cost you more to heat your home than it did on natural gas. So I'm just saying, adding the operational to the transition, I'm just sort of picking, adding to what you say of like, it, it doesn't, if that winds up being the case, that's not a good outcome either.
Absolutely, they, they put that in there, but I can say operationally, heat pumps perform much better than they say they do. And I can say that from a house that I've lived in for nine years with them.
Great.
It also depends a little bit on what, it depends a lot a bit, not a little bit, on what fuel you're switching from. Like natural gas is, is less expensive than oil, you know, there's some of that.
More expensive than electricity.
Just one other thing I want to point out here is I do live in a net zero house. We have no utility bills. We are decarbonized, we have no utility bill, so it costs 10% extra to do the work we did on our house, but we save 3,000 plus a year because we have no, and that's not talked about at all when they talk about having to force people to do solar. Depending on how it's financed, your electricity is cheaper than the cost of the financing with solar today. So solarizing a house can actually reduce someone's payments if they have to read the financial resource to do it.
There's a caveat though, I think, Laurie, which is if it's, if you're starting from scratch, yes, but if you've got a hydraulic system and you need to convert, it's, it's, that's a big conversion.
Yes.
And so it's a valid, valid, it's expensive to, to, to-
I was, I was talking about electric at that point, but yes, you're right.
I'm interested that Paul used the word transition, in fact, I use the word transition instead of implementation in that, in that particular sentence.
Trying to say something?
Nope, I'm, I'm good, thanks.
Okay, great. Anything else on the energy section? There's been tons of awesome recent work on this area with the Climate Action Plan, so I feel like we're ahead of the game on this section.
We tried not to write too, too much in here, we tried to sort of give a little bit of context, but not repeat the entire climate action plan. It's, it's tricky, we could write a lot in there, but we tried to sort of give it a framework of why are we saying this? And a few key highlights, but if you feel like we've missed the mark, please tell us.
I have some other point, but I think I could do it offline, it's more, more deletions and making it shorter and more punchy. That's, we don't need to discuss it here because not adding anything, it's removing things.
Quick read, this was the only section that came out, but I, I know that if I had time to read it a little more than-
As I said, you'll have at least two-
Two more passes.
It was at the end, actually, on page 19, where I made a note for myself that we all have already stated what the energy objectives are earlier on in the document. Why do we need to repeat them at the end again? All we need to say is that, you know, we need, the goal is to meet the Climate Action Plan and just those few items. Renewable energy generation will need to increase by, I would leave out the 300 and 600%, and put the, leave the numbers in there, 63,000 to 121,000 megawatt hours. 300% and 600%, I think is a bit frightening for people to read. It might give them the wrong impression, but that's where we are. I'll send you that stuff offline.
Anything else on the energy section?
The last paragraph echoes what I was talking about up above, but I think it needs to be beefed up some too.
You know, I think that, you know, along those lines, Laurie, even if someone maybe isn't in the category of a low-income person, it's still a big deal to replace a, like a heating system or an electrical system in a house, so, you know, having some kind of reasonable transmission, like at the end of a lifespan, or when you're replacing something anyway. I mean, it feels like a big scary thing, so to be asked to replace a big system on your own, so. If we need to say something to like guarantee people, we're not making them just go in at their own expense and replacing a perfectly working system, I don't know if that's something that needs to be addressed somewhere.
Well, there was, there was another fear expressed that I've heard from time to time that, oh my God, you're gonna force me to jump my, my natural gas furnace and force me to buy a heat pump? And I think we, we need to put some words of comfort in here, in, in this plan, that that isn't the case. And it would only happen at the end of life of, of, of the fossil burden.
That sounds good, the words of comfort, I guess that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, you bought a house that was built in 2012 that has something, and that system has 20 more years of life in it.
There was one, one other thing, yeah, exactly, that we use, we should use the same terminology. In the, in the ordinance, we use fossil fuel free.
Sure.
And instead of carbon free and renewable energy instead of fuel sourcing, so that we can, the same terminology is used here as in the plan, the Climate Action Plan. But you'll see, that's what I said, I will send you.
I have one more question, is this the only section that talks about climate, or are we talking about it somewhere else?
Climate is one of the threads that runs through everything, so things like, you know, I feel like it's come up a million times, but the recreation section will have things about having indoor opportunities or the, the natural resources section about the, the need for open space or treeed recreation areas or passive for, that are cooler, or, you know, a part on top of the ecosystem values, transportation needs to be, has some climate, has climate-related things. I think it's, it's because it's one of those vision and goal statements, it's a thread that runs through, through everything.
The commission had talked about creating a section, a section just on that, and they felt that that would not elevate the subject sufficiently to say, oh, it's its own thing because it's all things. What we would need from you is, we want you to hold our feet to the fire as we go through all the other chapters of challenging us, are we hitting this fair, just, and equitable, the, the climate, the opportunity oriented, the, the people focused in each chapter?
So I just want to throw out one other thing, this is sort of, it's not off topic, it's, but it's big, which is, we talked about fair and equitable. The way we live in Vermont, the way we live in America is not equitable, and it is not sustainable. And this is a crazy big topic, but it's one that we are really going to need to be facing as we progress, as my grandchildren get older. The way we live in the United States is consuming such a huge portion of the resources of our planet that it is not sustainable, so even if we do all these things we're talking about, in fact, in the next 20 years, the way we live needs to somehow fundamentally change. And I don't know how you approach that in the comprehensive plan, but I think it's something that, you know, if we, if we just dance around it, it's gonna bite us. So I just want to throw that on the table, it's, it's way too big for tonight, but it's something that, that I think needs to get brought into this conversation.
I, I didn't ask the planning commission, but I've asked the city council to think long and hard about the carrying capacity of the climate, or the carrying capacity of South Burlington, which is what we can affect, because as you say, we're, we're consuming beyond that capacity.
And fair and equitable really goes beyond just our community.
No, I think that that's, I mean, I hadn't really thought about the fair and equitable as to our fair and equitable role in a larger scale, but I don't think that there's anything wrong with, with discussing that. I think at the same time, and, and in agreeing with you, a lot of the feedback I heard in the community conversations was along the lines of, if we're going to be successful in achieving some of these goals, it's, it comes back to a lot of the same aspirations that people have of feeling connected to their community. If you feel connected to your trusted neighbor who is starting to make climate smart decisions, then you, you know, it's like the person who convinces you about the medical procedure that you should have, or, you know, you start to, that, that telling people, oh, you need to solve this problem, isn't gonna approach it in the same way as if we have a community where the feeling is growing, that we have a shared mission, and, you know, one by one by one. So how do we sort of hit way up high and break down at the bottom, I think is a really fascinating and exciting challenge.
And if it can be switched from, I'm forcing you to do this, to this is something that we all need to do together, it creates a very different feel.
And that we want to do together, right?
I think most of us want to, want to have our species survive. I know a lot of people don't think we have real climate issue, but 90% of the scientists are pretty clear in the report that just came out today, makes it clearer. So, and then that gets, I mean, during the pandemic, we saw the greatest reduction in, in greenhouse gases that we've seen in, in forever. And as soon as, as soon as we're all back out again, we're just right back to where we were. And how do we incorporate some of what that forced on us into this notion of we need to be shifting the way we're doing things?
We learned to live without-
For our own survival.
We learned to live without certain things.
Yeah.
Flying around in planes.
Driving around so much.
Yeah. To me, the most exciting part of that, that part of the pandemic is not the things that we learned to live without, but the things that we discovered are great, because it's really hard long-term as human beings. We really struggle with doing without.
Absolutely.
But we do great when it's like, oh, look, my life is better because, you know, so bike lanes and quieter streets and things like that, those were net positives, not just, oh, I had to do this thing that I always forced myself to not do something for a certain period of time, but yeah.
Yeah, well, and we are social beings.
Bringing up equity on, on a larger scale, at least making note of it, I think would be valuable here that, and I think the Climate Action Plan tries to at least note that a little bit. There's somewhere in there, talks about the American consumption as compared with, why? There's a statement about that, so there's something for us to draw from.
Can I go back to the Act 174 for a moment? Because I noted that on the Ecos Plan, the targets that they have are, three of them anyway, 89% of passenger cars to be electric by 2050, 75% of county homes need to be weatherized by 2050, and it's almost, it's 51 and a half thousand, and 90% of energy needs to be from renewables by 2050. Do those 89% and 75% numbers, can you check whether what we've done, 600 per year for X number of years, actually need to exceed those targets of the Ecos, the 2000 Ecos Plan?
Yes.
I think we, we, we need to know that if we're gonna say we're going to comply with Act 174.
Yeah, I, I think that on the objectives end of it, having been on the panel that has reviewed other towns, we are several steps ahead, so I'm, I'm not-
In that, we also talk about reducing miles traveled by car by 20%. There's nothing that talks about, and I don't know if this can be in there, about reduction of the number of vehicles. There's some-
So the way-
Because we switch all the cars to electric, we just-
Right, so the, the reduction of two and a half percent of vehicle miles traveled annually is a big metric that captures a whole bunch of things. It's fewer, it's fewer cars, period. It's more people choosing to be on a bike, it's more people, it's more transit, it's, it's having a convenience store within walking distance, so you could do that to begin with. I, I think that's a broad objective, that's a whole bunch of actions to get to it, but that by itself is a very powerful objective. Two and a half percent is not the trend that most of North America, except maybe the Rust Belt, have seen, and they didn't do it on purpose.
So we've, we haven't really heard much from any of the audience members today. I'm pretty commissioner-centric, does anyone joining us have anything they want to add to the conversation while we're still talking about the comp plan?
We do have one in person.
Go right ahead, in person.
Hey, yeah, so pertaining to energy, I didn't see anything about solar thermal as a way of being used to limit energy for heating. Is that something that's, hasn't taken off?
Did you say solar for?
So using something to heat water and some apparatus, is that not part of any of the Vermont plans existing? Is that why it's not showing up here, or you've got something on that, Laurie?
I can speak to it as, as having been a builder, I can say that 15 years ago, solar thermal was the most cost-effective form of renewable energy. Today, solar thermal has a lot of complications with either overproduction and et cetera, et cetera. And heat pump hot water heaters with solar are doing a better job cost-effectively producing hot water than solar thermal.
So the potential tanks, I guess, have taken that-
They've taken over, as opposed to in, in Arizona or Mexico or places where there's more sun and more consistent temperatures. It's, it's really tough to do in this cold climate.
I have personally evacuated vacuum tubes in a sunny climate, in South Africa, plenty of hot water. But here, snow and clouds, it's a problem. I think, I thought somebody there, I thought Andrew, whoever Andrew is, once had put his mic on. If that's, it is Andrew, I thought it was.
Hi, hi. I've, I've been listening intently to the conversation, and I, I think this question about the Climate Action Plan is, is exactly on, on target, so, and I think what's written here is exactly on target. So all sounds, all sounds good to me. The, the one comment maybe I would make in this section about energy when we reference GMPs 100% carbon-free mix, you know, there's been a lot of confusion, I think, in the community about what that means. It, it may make sense to flesh that out a little more, which in my, my mind, what it really means is because GMP sources all its energy from carbon-free, you know, from carbon-free sources, every time we transition a fossil fuel system to a renewable energy system, it adds that much more renewable energy to the grid and basically improves the whole Northeast grid. It, it might, it might be useful if, if we think we could kind of articulate that in an understandable way to alleviate some of the confusion in the community about what this means.
What Andrew just said made me think of something else which we haven't covered, which is storage, energy storage, which should be a critical part of the, it can be a crucial element of transitioning. Because the sun doesn't always shine and the wind doesn't always blow.
And, and also the argument that, well, if we switch to all electric and the power goes out, and I don't have a generator, I'm stuck without any heat. And, and storage can really change- And, and storage can really change that picture dramatically for people.
And in my, I recently had a conversation with GMP. And I think from their perspective, from a resiliency of the system perspective, that's also positive.
Yeah.
You know, it's distributed storage of the energy allows, it's just a stronger system.
And also cuts down on transmission costs.
Okay. You should mute again, but just on that one last point, Laurie, I mean, as you know, if you have a fossil fuel furnace or most radiant systems are used electricity, you lose your heat too.
Yeah. But people talk about having a little tiny generator just to run their furnace or their boiler. So. And, and if you're all electric, you need, you need kilowatts, not just a little tiny generator.
Anything else or should we move on to the solar PV discussion? It's a good transition, I think, maybe. So next item on the list is the LDR amendment. So LDR 23-01 and 21 solar PV. And LDR 23-02, which are some minor technical amendments.
All right, so this one's mine. So this is something for new commissioners and members of the audience. The commission's been talking about for a while. Most recently in November, you looked at a, at a initial draft put together by a commissioner of requiring that solar ready zones on new construction be installed with solar. So that is what is in here. The draft that you see is very similar to what you saw in November with a few little tweaks from our city attorney, but it's largely the same. I did want to flag for you, and I think it's alluded to in the cover memo, but I wanted to flag for you that we spent some time talking with the Public Service Department staff to understand exactly what this would apply to in the short term and then likely in the medium term. So the way that the section is drafted, it says any new building that requires a solar ready zone would need to build solar, essentially on the roof. And I'll talk about a couple of exceptions in a minute. So what does that mean? Today, any building that falls under the commercial energy code would be, must have a solar ready zone. So let's say you adopted this and it, you know, the council adopted it on July 1st. Then any, if as drafted, any building that came in for its zoning permit on July 2nd that is subject to the state energy code would be required to do. So one question for you to consider is, do you, would you want to recommend to the council that there be any kind of lag time from adoption to implementation? That's sort of a smaller question. The bigger thing that I wanted to flag for you is every handful of years, the state goes through a process of updating the energy codes, the residential building energy codes and the commercial building energy codes. The draft 2023 versions are now out. And the Public Service Department staff member that I spoke with a couple of weeks ago said that they're anticipating that they will probably take effect around November, December of this, of this calendar year. When that happens, the current draft would require a solar ready zone be established for new single family or duplex or row homes, essentially anytime that somebody has their own individual roof, where their roof is at least 600 square feet facing broadly east, south or west. So if they have that amount of space, then they will be required to have a solar ready zone under the state energy code, which the way we've drafted this rule would mean that automatically, as soon as that takes effect, they would need to install solar. I'm flagging that because when you first talked about this a year ago, residential buildings like single family, two family and row homes weren't, weren't really part of the discussion because that draft state code hadn't been prepared. Theoretically, this also applies to mid rise buildings, two to three story buildings. But in practice, it probably won't. So what, what the state person explained to me is that only in the circumstance where individual units had 600 square feet of roof space above them, would it ever come to be? If it's a collective, you know, thousand or 5,000 square feet for a building that is under the residential energy code, that is not going to have a solar ready zone. It's only when you get to the large buildings of a commercial energy code, which is either a commercial building or residential building more than four stories tall, would that kick in? So basically, they said, you know, if you're a two story, five plex, they made the conscious choice to not require a solar ready zone because it's too small to be a group sort of net metering, but too big to be individual homeowners having their own thing that they're responsible for. So that's, that's how this would work. And then, you know, the next iteration of the code might change it and then our rules would reflect that. Does that make sense? I know I went through something super technical there, but the big takeaway is the thing that has evolved since the first time you talked about this a year or so ago is that if you, if the council adopted it as written, single family homes, two family homes and row homes would be required in most cases to install solar, solar. So that was the first big policy question that I wanted you to all discuss and affirm. Is that your intent? And then, secondly, we can get into sort of some odd quirks and exceptions in the rules, but maybe I'll stop there and get your first read on that as a commission or members of the public.
So that was your question about that the commission confirm its intent. That's the standard applied to all new buildings except those specifically exempted. And my feeling is that, yes, we should. We want to get as much, as much solar as we can.
I think it's a great idea conceptually. I think for homeowners who are trying to build a new home and are having a hard time getting the financing for what they need, if they then have to finance another $20,000 that doesn't increase the assessed value of their property, we got a problem.
It's changed. Mr. Charle, could you?
Andrew, can you speak to this?
Can you elucidate on the appraisal issue that I know you spoke about the other day?
Yeah, absolutely. That has changed. At least I'm told that it's changed. So Laura, I completely agree with you. A few years ago, we decided to not move forward with a residential requirement because the appraisal standards didn't include the solar PV in the appraisal, therefore couldn't be financed through the regular first mortgage. I, a neighbor who I met is an appraiser. And he told me that in the past couple of years, that's changed. Now all the appraisers, including him, when he does appraisals, you know, know how to do this and do do it. That would be very rare for appraisal not to include the value of the solar PV. We can have him come and, you know, if there's a public hearing, he'd be willing to come and speak to that and testify to that.
Then the second question that I have was that is, I've got a solar ready roof and I have to do the solar ready now. I have to put in the panels. Can we somehow find a way to provide financing for that solar in a way that it doesn't?
Are you talking about an existing building or a new building?
Well, these are talking about new buildings. This is talking about new buildings. So I'm building a new house. And, I mean, when, when we put solar on our house, we got a VCU energy loan, which was low or no interest loan. If this could be incorporated, if there's a way to incorporate something like that so that it doesn't just place a burden on somebody. I'm just.
It's.
It's an additional cost. Now, the solar also reduces your energy bills more than your mortgage cost if it's done properly. But it's just a concern that comes up repeatedly when people hear about these mandates.
I guess, I, you know, when this got brought forward to us, it was pretty clearly just kind of big commercial or large complexes, not an individual homeowner. Like a, like it feels very different than what we talked about before. And I guess I just really want to make sure we like talk through this. You know, and I know, Andrew, you were the one who kind of brought this forward initially. It feels different.
My, and the letter I wrote, right, to the council around this was focused on commercial solar. For, for, for the reasons that, one, we had this issue with the appraisal, but, but two, you know, when Paul and I and some others had met with groups of developers a few years ago to talk about this potential requirement, you know, the commercial developers all, you know, indicated that it wouldn't be an issue for them, that they understood that they could amortize the cost and it would be cost effective. The residential developers all kind of articulated concerns of the type that Laurie's articulating, you know, burdens, burdens to homeowners. And they, they were not really comfortable. And I think that honestly, if we were to, if you, if you were to suggest expanding this to include residential, I think that'd be pretty significant pushback. Now, now maybe that's okay, like, fine, we hear the pushback and we decide to go forward in any event. I don't dismiss that option, honestly, because I, in my heart, I do think that the economics are there. Solar is so cheap right now that I, I really think that in a short period of time, the homeowner who has maybe some initial outlay will recoup that or over a reasonable period of time. And then, you know, that the economics really are such that it shouldn't actually be a burden, you know, over some reasonable period of time. And so, and so maybe we could push back on, you know, we could, we'll be able to fight through that pushback. But, but it is, it is different in kind and requires a lot of discussion.
Yes. I guess it also feels like sneaky, you know? If we say, you know, currently it only applies to commercial and type of buildings. And then, but we kind of know in the back of our head that we're pretty sure that in November, that's going to change.
You obviously be very transparent about that.
Yeah. So. I guess there a way to have it only apply to the commercial building code buildings right now? And then kind of see how that goes and then do maybe a reevaluation once the, the new codes are out and would have it apply to residential?
So here's a couple of thoughts for you on this. One is that you could choose to initially adopt it applicable only to buildings subject to the commercial building energy code and then come back for an amendment at a later time. So that's, you know, you've done that with all sorts of things, like the solar ready roof requirement itself. I think that I owe it to you, we owe it to you professionally to also note that there's a bit of an unknown in all of this, which is that the legislative bill that's garnering a lot of attention, S100, does have in it a provision that has been shifting, so we don't know where it's officially going to land. But it says that in its current form, that municipalities may not adopt ordinances or regulations that are more strict than the state energy code after July 1, 2023. It's not clear to us whether that would affect something like this because it is not an energy code, it is a related subject. But I can't say that it doesn't affect it either. So, you know, that's a consideration for you that our authority, it's possible our authority to regulate things in the future may be limited. A possible in between that I think we would have to vet through legal counsel is whether if you chose to include it now, but offer a a waiver for a certain period of time. So for example, the recently adopted heating ordinance says that that new hot water systems have to be on electric. But for a two year period in commercial applications, you can request and then are automatically granted a waiver. So you're essentially given a two year deferral to allow the technology to catch up. That might be something that addresses the concern that you're raising, Jessica, while also potentially doing our best to meet, to, to buffer on any changes that S100 might bring in. I think what I.
Well, just, I'm sorry, just one more point about why, I guess in my mind, it made sense to go with really commercial first or only maybe. The reason is that, you know, commercial building owners sometimes have like split incentives. If they're, if they're leasing or renting, they may not really, you know, care because they can fold electricity costs into the rent. And they, they sometimes may not really, you know, care as much about, you know, taking advantage of cheap solar, right? Whereas like a homeowner, right? You have your home. And if it really is economic to put the solar on, and now you have a solar ready zone. And we've already like, you know, said in the regs that everything has to be oriented the right way and the street has to be oriented the right way. Most homeowners are going to go and make the economically right decision to put the solar on their roof. And the ones who wouldn't do that are going to chafe at being told they have to, you know? So I guess that's, I guess in my mind also why, it made sense to me at least, you know, and, you know, I mean, everyone knows that like climate change is like really near and dear to my heart. But notwithstanding that, that it makes sense to take a smaller step here, I guess.
Donna, do you want to go ahead, Donna?
Yeah. I've been paying a lot of attention to S100. And the other, the other piece that really concerns me is how so many condominium associations have said, absolutely, you can't put solar on the roofs. And I, I think that issue has to, I don't, I'm not sure really what the best way to address that. Because under S100, you know, they're encouraging a lot more, you know, buildings that would primarily have been single family to be up to, up to three and four family. And, you know, that, that gets into the range where is this a commercial building? Is this, or is this a residential building? You know, in terms of, in terms of energy codes, it becomes a fine line between is this a commercial property or is this a residential property? If it's, if it's managed by a condominium, right now, a lot of the regulations for condominium associations are very, very negative toward putting anything on the roof. So unless it becomes very clear that this is a piece of the common property, you know, in other words, the solar becomes managed by the association and not by the individual homeowner. Those are questions that I don't think have even been close to being addressed in any, in, in any format. I have, I have not heard any conversation about that.
Donna, I don't think a condominium association or a homeowners association can legally prevent somebody from putting solar.
Oh, yes. Well, they are, they are, maybe it's not legal. It may not be legal, but they're doing it all the time.
Okay, fine.
So. So I guess, I, I think a lot of what Andrew said resonated about the residential versus the commercial. the residential versus the commercial. I don't know if others have thoughts. Um, Laurie?
I've got a quick thought. Just thinking about the big picture here. Whether we're talking about solar or whether we're talking about heating systems or everything associated with decarbonization and electrification or, um, it feels like a lot of pushback that comes, comes from we're using sticks and not carrots. And I think as this whole program goes forward, we really need to be thinking about how it can be incentivized so that Virginia, so that, um, people don't feel like something's getting jammed down their throat that they can't handle or they can't afford. Um, I would like to see solar on every roof of every building that's built from now on, but how do we, how do we craft it in such a way that people can embrace it and not just resist?
Well, I think Andrew had the answer by showing them that it's
Pencils out.
economically in their best interest. And that's a question of, of messaging.
But
And that feels like it's not in the LDRs though, I guess. I, 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 it feels very reasonable for a commercial building that has, um, you know, people working in the building industry and development and financing and, you know, they're already doing a lot of these things, but you know, for individual homeowners, it feels, it feels like a carrot approach might be more comfortable, like than an LDR approach, but.
What's the carrot?
Well, the, the Inflation Reduction Act has a bunch of carrots in it. I, I think this is a question that needs to be really tossed around because e- even if I see that it pencils out, I may not just have the, the lending capacity to make it work for me. And, 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 and if you can come to me and say, look, that's not a problem. We've got this financing system set up. I, I don't know what the answer is, but I think we need to look at it from the two sides to to make it so that we don't just get so much pushback that that it doesn't progress. And I want to see it happen faster, not slower.
But don't most, don't most PV installers have this twenty-year financing program where you, you're paying for it by, by paying for the, for the energy that your system generates? And, or, and there's an option after five years, you can buy it at its then current book value. Uh, I, I didn't, I didn't have twenty grand to shell out when I put it online, but I was able to do it without, with no money down, but paying every month.
Well, again, if those systems are there, I just think that they need to be fleshed out and, and presented at the same time. So we're asking you to do this, but here are the ways that it can be done.
I know that some comment has it and I bought mine from, at that time, um, which is now Tesla Energy, uh, was his customers. Um, and I'm sure others, others like, uh, Building Energy and other local Peck Electric, they all have that financing, uh, facility. And, um, I know certainly it's uncommon, this, that you can do it with no money down and you, you pay them sixteen cents per kilowatt hour that you generate for twenty years, whatever it is. Or you, if you can raise the money after five years, you can buy it.
Jessica, we do have a member of the public who raised his hand.
Yeah, you want to go ahead? You want to state your name for the record, actually? That'd be helpful.
Um, so I'm trying to make sure I'm in, in the right part of the conversation. The discussion is not whether or not to have solar ready zones. It's whether to require the installation on the solar ready zone. As part of the LDL or not. And if not, what is the delivery mechanism that ensures that there is encouragement and, and carrots presented opulently to incentivize that without actually forcing someone's hand?
Right. So, um, unless something changes in the draft state energy code, all essentially, um, new single-family homes duplexes and townhomes after the end of calendar year twenty-three will have to have the solar ready zone. So they will be, that the building will be set up to accept it at new buildings as of that time. And I think Laurie, your question is, should an approach be more of helping people to get from the ready to the constructed rather than the thou shall do it? Or if there is a thou shall do it, paraphrase, here's how to get it.
Yes, yes. You know, unfortunately, there has to be handholding to get people to do this.
Did, did you have, Ryan, did you want to add? Was that a question or did you have a, a, a?
Add is just to
And I think if, if there is a way to do that, I mean, I, I assume most people have been reading all the commentaries and Vermont Digger and everywhere else. The big pushback on all of this is you're jamming it down people's throats. You're going to bankrupt us. We can't do it. And there's got to be a response to that or that conversation is going to get louder. And so I'm encouraging us to, and if it's not in this body, where does that conversation happen so that that pushback is diffused?
Well, it feels like the answer isn't to require it now without those qu- answers, que- or those questions answered. Um, you know, if, if the research has been done and the commercial builders haven't really flagged a major thing, it feels very comfortable, like move forward with commercial, like we had, we've been talking about for over a year. Um, I don't know. I wouldn't want pushback on all of the energy-related goals and incentive, incentives and objectives that the city is doing because we like preemptively, um, you know, required this. Uh, Michael?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm obviously not happy with having to back down on this, but, uh, we've, we're going around in circles here. I think we should try and let's, let's go with commercial and then hope that we can in short order
Come back.
Come back and, and, and get, um, um, domestic residential done at a later stage. Um, I mean, it, 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 it seems to me a step back from our climate action plan obligations or o- objectives, but um, it doesn't seem like we have consensus here to do all new buildings. It seems like we can get consensus to get commercial only at this point.
Yeah. So to do, is that a big enough change that we wouldn't be able to warn it tonight? Um, Paul?
I, I'm comfortable that if you give us the guidance to have it applied to only building subject to the commercial energy code, that we can, that's specific enough guidance that we can tweak the draft for the purpose of the public hearing. Um, I, I would want to go and, you know, not do it on the fly, but I think the guidance is specific enough that I'm co- I'm comfortable you can warn a hearing if you want.
Need a motion for that?
Uh, I would take a motion if you were ready, when you're ready for the whole warning of the public hearing and just say, and modify.
Cause there are some technical amendments as well. That'd be good to add. Um, I don't know if there were any other changes people needed to the
I think that the other things that I flagged, Jessica, were really only applicable in the instance of a, um, of a, uh, of, of the residential application to it. Um, but if there's anything else we find during the public hearing, there's sort of some, uh, there's some allowances to have a ground-mounted system in certain cases instead of a solar ready zone, but then it doesn't say how much ground mounted you need to have. Michael had suggested an equivalent.
Yep.
Um, uh, why don't we dig into that a little bit more? And if you need to adjust that at the public hearing, that's fully within your authority to do that. But we'll sort of, if you all agree with Michael's thought, that seems to be logically, um,
My thought was that the applicant would need to install a system ground mounted or other that produces an equivalent amount of energy as a theoretical maximum solar PV potential of that solar ready zone. Was, was the words I used. Um,
Sounds reasonable.
And then I'm sorry, if they have a ground mounted, would, would they have a solar ready zone? I thought it was an either or.
Right. So, so Andrew, the catch is that, um, under the solar ready zone um, definition in this, in the state code, it defines a specific amount, size of a solar ready zone. And then it says, under certain circumstances, or you can have a ground mounted system, but it doesn't say how big the ground mounted system is.
Fine, yeah, fine. Okay, I didn't, I didn't realize that. Okay.
Okay. And then Donna, you have your hand up and then we'll go to Andrew.
Well, I keep forgetting to put my hand down after my previous comment, so.
Okay, then we'll go to Andrew.
So just, um, one, one tweak, um, I guess the language which I see in the agenda, um, says that, you know, the applicant should be required to design a PV system to maximize the solar PV of the zone. Um, I had suggested something a little softer than that. Let me just kind of flesh that out. You know, ma- maximize is a really strong word, right? So for instance, there's, there's all different kinds of panels, right? And you have some super expensive panels that, you know, generate, you know, the very most kilowatts that you possibly can. And I'm not sure that we're, it makes sense to tell people that you have to go out and buy the, the absolute most expensive panel to absolutely maximize. I guess, wh- what I had written was, um, I, first I, I used the word reasonably maximize. We can talk about that word. And then I said, assuming the use of standard solar panels. Um, I, I think, I think, I think that word maximize needs to be softened a little bit because it's too, um, requires too much, I think, um, to just use that word without any qualifier.
It's maximum potential.
I, I think that's too much too, Michael, honestly. I mean, to just use the word maximum in, in, without any qualifier, again, uh, uh, you, you know, there, there's all different grades of solar panels, right? And you can find some super expensive one, you know, to maximize, but is that really what we think we're telling people that they have to do? Like, go out and buy the very most expensive panel that's out there? I, I don't, I don't think so.
Well, elsewhere we have, um, we have a definition of, um, the amount that it should, it should be equivalent to the amount of energy required for the first year's operation of the building. Could we adapt that for this?
No, that, that, that's a limit, right? That says that, you know, you don't have to put more than the, than you're going to use. Right? But I still, I guess in my mind at least, um, and I'll, I'll make the comment and stop that. I just think that word maximize is, is too absolute.
Well, could leaving out the word maximum, would that be good enough?
I, 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 I like the, I like Andrew, your suggestion of, you know, something along the lines of prevailing technology. Um, our, our city attorney was a little uncomfortable with reasonably maximize because then you get into a reasonably according to whom.
Right.
But prevailing technology might be, that is a little easier.
Kind of technical that was like assuming use of standard solar panels and maybe there's a better way to say that, but I, you know, just kind of indicate that we're not, I'm not saying you have to go out and like, you know what I mean? Get the very, very best latest technology that possibly exists.
So I think, you know, just thinking about this from the administrative perspective, um, reasonably is a difficult word to do, but if I were to call up efficiency Vermont and say, efficiency, what are you giving rebates for today, um, on solar panel? They would say, we're not doing rebates on the most bleeding edge technology because it costs a hundred thousand dollars and you know, it's, it's not, it's not worth it, but we are giving rebates on the following. And I think something that follows that, I think is what you're trying to get to, Andrew, which is, you know, what's the technology today?
Current standard panels?
I think we can write something to that effect and, and tighten it up for your public hearing.
Okay.
Be ca- be careful. Efficiency Vermont has never given rebates on solar panels. So don't, don't leave that, don't leave that thought in people's minds because it's not true.
Well, okay. Thank you, Donna. I guess I mean to say some entity that can help an administrator make a black and a somewhat black and white decision about what is considered prevailing technology.
Let you reword it.
So it looks like we have a question in the audience.
Yes. Brian Doyle, I was wondering if the reference to maximize had to do with the area of the photo, um, of the solar ready
Zone.
Zone, um, and maybe that distinction of making it about maximizing the area usage. Um, will help delineate what is being maximized unless maximize was originally intended for
I know, that's covered in the wording because it says, uh, solar potential of that solar ready zone, but what Andrew's raised is that somebody might say, well, to get the maximum, you have to buy panels that are three times the price of the standard ones.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. But I think Ryan's point is an interesting idea of if you were to say, whatever the technology is, you choose the technology or asking you to get as close to the physical area as possible.
You could say maximum.
Not every little triangle, but
Well, we
to maximize the square footage of it.
So, yeah.
Of the solar ready zone.
Very good suggestion.
Yeah.
Very, very good suggestion.
Okay, that will be a heck of a
I wonder if, I wonder if you almost need both though, you know, because what if there is like a funny shaped roof? Um, you know, do you need to put in like teeny tiny panels to fill in around a window or something? Or, you know, could you say something like maximize the square footage within the prevailing technology, something like that? Cause you know, there, there's only, there's standard sized panels and then there's probably like special sized panels, like.
I guess my, yeah, I mean, I think we could say, you know,
Maximize the square footage with standard panel layout.
Something like that. Um, and then I think we can lea- we can leave the technology alone because who the heck is going to go through all this effort to put in bad technology, right?
Yes.
If you're going to go through all this, you're going to put in something that is creating reasonable, right? I, I, I like that. If you're willing to give us a little bit of leeway to figure out how to, um, word reasonably maximizing the area, um, we'll come back with some more.
Just leave out reasonable.
Yes.
The sentiment, but not the words.
I know, my, it's one of the things that my, my corporate lawyer said, never use in any contract.
Okay. So maximize the, the geog- the geo- the geographic area using standard panel layout or something like that.
Maximize the square footage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, are we ready for a motion?
Well, there was the question of the effective date. And I suggested it should be the date that the regulations are adopted.
So just right away. Okay. I mean, city council or the public can always comment on that. Um, and, uh, we didn't talk much about the technical amendments, but it'd be nice if those were included. And I guess we also need a date for the public hearing. Um, what seems reasonable from the staff end? Would it be?
We would have to, in order to meet our other paper deadline, you'd have to do it for April twenty-fifth. Is your next regular meeting at which you could do it?
Okay, April twenty-fifth. Somebody want to make the motion or should I try? I guess there's probably language in here. Um, I can try to do it. I moved to hold a public hearing on amendments LDR twenty-three dash oh one, solar PV standards and LDR twenty-three dash oh two, minor and technical amendments on April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three at seven PM. And approve the accompanying planning commission report along with the changes to tonight's draft that include applying only to the commercial building energy standards and changing the language about maximizing according to the discussion we had this evening.
Second.
Okay, any discussion about the motion? Okay, all in favor, raise your hand and say aye, so I can get us all. Donna?
Aye.
Okay, and I can't see Michael, so.
Oh, sorry. Turn the camera, man. I'm still here.
Did you say aye? Okay, so that was all of the commissioners in attendance tonight. The six of us all voted aye to move that forward. Okay, awesome, and thanks, Andrew, for all the help.
No, thank you very much. It's very exciting. This is really exciting. Thank you.
I know it's been a long time coming, so. We do have minutes from two meetings. Any comments on the minutes?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, and for the record, it's January twenty-four and January thirty-one, and those would both be twenty twenty-three. Any discussion?
Did you get a second?
Yes.
No.
I'll take a full motion.
Okay, any discussion? And everyone is allowed to vote, even if you weren't in attendance, just to clarify. All in favor of the minutes? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that was unanimous, the six of us in attendance. And any other business?
I have one very quick thing to say. On off the press today, we just received word that we were fully approved and funded for the municipal planning grant that you submitted last fall, which is to design a toolkit for outreach that is specifically focused on equity. So how do we, how do we approach outreach in projects that we do through an equity lens? That was fully funded by the state, which just were heard today. So we will launch that sometime this spring, summer.
Who's going to write it?
Somebody who can speak to the subjects more better than we can, which is the whole point. But with a lot of community input.
And there is a meeting next Tuesday?
Right, so today was a special meeting because of last week's snowstorm. Next week is the regular, and then we'll, on the regular schedule, is second and fourth Tuesdays at seven. Fran, Laurie, thank you so much for joining on short notice. We're excited to have you on board. Ryan, thank you for coming tonight and sharing some very useful feedback on how to hit that solar thing.
Yeah, really great. Super good to have a nice big group again, so thank you for attending. Everyone. We will have a great rest of the evening. We are adjourned.